The records show that all directors are present. Do I, can I hear a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Move to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Consent agenda passes. I've picked up the sign up sheet for comments from citizens prior to the meeting. We have no one signed up at this time. Is there anybody that was unable to sign up? Miles, you can come up and do that.
Good evening. I'm Miles Schlesinger, and I had a, raised the issue of someone coming once a month to the city council meeting and making a little presentation on what the Devil's Lake Water Improvement District is doing. And now that you are a newly settled organization, I would like some discussion whether it's good or bad to make a three-minute public comment on what we are doing. I heard this weekend, or last weekend, that the State Lands Division heard a complaint from the water aeration device that we were testing at the Dooling residence. And that complaint was made to the state by, I assume, a friend of Paul Robertson's. And I think it's very important for the board to, not mention that, but to talk about the positive things we are doing for the lake and for the Lincoln City community. And I'd like to hear some comment during the meeting when you, to discuss that and see if you think it's likelihood. There are five members of the board now that are local residents and three that have been in business here for a long time. And I think that's respected of you. And you should make a little good PR. So that's the conversation.
Josh, are we aware of that complaint?
We're aware of the complaint. It's been resolved.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. We've already been in contact with DSL.
Okay.
He resolved it properly, I think.
Great.
Thank you, Miles.
Thanks, Miles. I agree with you.
Any other further public comment before we start our meeting? Thanks, Miles. All right. I don't see a representative from the sewer committee to make a committee report. Do we have a special projects committee member here to make a report? Wow, we're gonna go fast today.
Kind of thing.
How about, I know our Save Our Shorelines and Water Monitoring Committee chairman is here, so we could have a report from her.
Where are those other committees from? That's what you do. You schedule your meeting right before the board meeting, then you're here. So I'm Mary Ellen Rich. The committee met at 3:30 at OCCC this afternoon. We talked about water quality monitoring that Whitney Rich has been doing. We talked about the Floating Garden project, and I think, is there a picture?
There will be.
There will be.
Don't steal her thunder.
I'll hold one up. So if you can see, it should be on there, but it's two weeks old. It was launched on July 27th. It's now two weeks old, and things are actually living. Couple things, the ferns died, and those are from Bill and Julie's, but I did put in seven plants from Bear Valley, and four of the herbs are surprisingly still growing. And surprisingly, it floated. So, Whitney wrote up a draft of supplies needed for a DIY project, do-it-yourself project, reducing pollutants, how to build a floating island placement, a series of pictures. We might even do a video sometime. But there is a YouTube video on how to build this, this little PVC pipe with gluing and putting, before you glue it, you put in empty water bottles capped, which you make your cousin camp attendees drink. And so you have 57 to 60 bottles to stuff in your PVC pipe to float your floating island. So that's the floating island update, two weeks, and I will update every. Bill, did you have a question?
I did, on the dimension of that, the Floating Garden.
Nine by five, I believe.
Nine by five.
Your cost is in the elbows and the tees. Oh, Larry knows, yes.
Four by eight.
Oh, four by eight. I wanted nine by five. But cost-effectively, we ordered from Amazon 24 baskets, and I punched 60 holes in each basket so the little roots could go down, so the grass carp have something to eat. They haven't, they haven't even approached it, so the roots aren't breaking through yet. The ducks are not attacking it for salad. Don't know why. I kind of expected that.
No water fowls landing on that, or nothing?
I thought they'd nest, but I guess we're past that season. So it might be a good time to put it in, in late July. But I think we need a longer growing season, so two weeks is not an indication of what might grow there. It is floating, though, so that's a good sign.
And does it anchor?
No, we tied it to the cleats on the dock. You know, it's a, holding it there. But I think it's gonna get beat up during the winter unless you put some barriers in. I still think it'd get beat up.
You think you should pull it out in the winter?
We're gonna put it in the slip and just let it stay in the water next to the boat in the boat slip. But everybody won't have that, so I would advise that they pull it up and put it on the dock and just let the rain water it for a while, and then put it back in in the spring. You know? And, but I would put boat, what are those called, Larry?
Bullies.
Bullies, thank you. Around the side so they don't get, so it doesn't get beat up. Because you want it to look nice and white, you know. We tried to get black, but that appear, it'll come in four inch. So it takes four inch PVC pipe and all these elbows and tees, four elbows and two tees. And we really did do a big one. But you could do half that size and probably put four inch pots if you slip tied, use slip ties on them. Slip tied them to the lattice and to the, so they don't float off. And I think that would work, and you wouldn't spend the Amazon thing, and then everything would be local. Because the only not local from Ace Hardware is the Amazon $37.24 pots, or baskets, little baskets, that we just, we put two layers of newspaper and then the root ball in from Bill and Julie's. And then I did the seven plants. I had to. I fell apart and just had to get something that might be useful in their herbs and things, so.
So are the ferns they use, are they like a Boston fern?
Well, it was from your property, so I'm having Whitney try to identify what I got from your property that are in there.
Yeah, just.
But we got the water lilies, the white ones, and put them on the corners. They're floating. And then one fern is still living. I'm not sure why, because the other three just kind of died in the heat of that first week. But the other things are, they're growing. They're, they're doing okay for two weeks of sitting in water. And they really are, three inches of water comes up on that pot. And, you know, it's in newspaper and dirt. And so I went to Bear Valley and asked them what likes to be, have their feet wet, and they gave me these seven plants that would be happy. So far, so good.
So are any of those unlocated on my property?
I got all of them but the seven from your, well, yeah, I think I even got the white lilies from your property. So do you have anything left?
It's a little bear in there.
It's all off my dock on a floating island. So then the committee approved 2018, because Tom Wood called me last Thursday, and needs proposed, well, these are approved now by the committee today, 2018 SOS Committee Goals. So the first one is revegetation of the lake shoreline to ultimately achieve 20% coverage. There's a lot behind all these. Number two is monitor water quality to detect in post-weekly E. coli bacteria and Habs levels when in bloom between Memorial Day and Labor Day. And we decided that we would also test if, if a bad algae bloom came in after Labor Day, we'll, we'll test that too, because we have the equipment.
I have one question on your replanting shoreline.
Yes.
Did you say 20% of shorelines unplanted?
That seems to be what everybody seems to want on the lake, is a 20% coverage.
And how many of those lots are not 20%?
Well, there's a lot. So we're gonna try to do everything that has a shoreline and not a barricade. And then another solution, if the floating island works, might be a floating island on those barricaded, non-shoreline edges. So we'll see what we get. It's, it's step by step, doesn't happen overnight.
Sure.
We have to take these steps to try things out. And we will be in the spring, because Kent advised it, that we get going on planting in areas that have volunteered to have nurseries, get some plants, test plants in, and see in the water to see, because we're having trouble getting things to sit in the water and stay there through the winter.
Right. Big challenge.
I wonder if we could get some young adults to build those floating gardens, and we could have them for purchase. Can we sell things?
It came to about, not counting the plants, about 150. You know, you could be more cost effective by not buying the Amazon 24 pot, baskets, and doing four inch pots, you know, lined up. And you could probably do a different size, but your cost is in the connections of the PVC pipe, I thought, and the lattice underneath.
Yeah, we might be able to do, obviously not-for-profit, of course, but, you know, something that would just meet cost for cost.
Or even if there was, you know, a Boy Scout group that wanted to build them, that we could.
Mm-hmm. Buy materials.
Partner with, like an Eagle Scout project or something.
And Whitney wrote up.
Hasn't camp projects.
Or, or the BB camp is always looking for different projects to be at Lake Stewart's as well, so.
But Whitney wrote up, you know, what you need to buy at wherever, but we got it at Ace Hardware.
I'm just thinking, you know, like, because if you own a property that's armored, and you could just go to the Dilwood office and buy it, and then all you had to do was stick the plants in it, we'd be way more likely to get people to use them, rather than, I mean, some people will use a DIY slip, but some people won't.
Right, right.
People have time and no money, and some people have money and no time.
Well, I think that the key first is, let's see if this works.
Yeah, well, sure.
That's why we didn't say, okay, go to, you know, call so-and-so. We're, we're gonna post, once we get this from draft status into permanent, when we know more, we will post it on the, on the site, and then we'll start working on.
I mean, I think the concept should work.
Any Eagle Scout project that wants to build five of them, that kind of thing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Great idea.
Oh, and then getting back to, let's see, we, the second goal was the monitor of the water quality. Third is continuation of hydroponic floating garden project and provide detailed instructions, plant recommendations, and projected cost estimates on the Dilwood website for lake shore DIY construction. Number four is prevention, early detection, and control of shoreline and in-lake invasive plant species such as Scotch Broom, which Whitney told me what I thought was Scotch Broom is really a yellow daisy. Mill foils, fan worts, hydralisks, naiads, whatever you say, yellow floating heart lilies. Those are the ones that are just inundating our lakes. We'll figure out how we can cut those down, cut them back, keep fighting them. And then Kent, and Sherry mentioned Tanzi and Mallow. Did I get those right? Tanzi and Mallow, okay. I think that, oh, and our next meeting is, the next board meeting, 3:30, before the board meeting on September 14th at 3:30, so anyone can come who wants to. And don't forget about these Garden Smart books that are, Josh has a bunch of them at the office.
So Mary Ellen, can I ask a question?
Sure, you can.
So going forward, we have already identified some things that are working either on Bill's property, or we'll find out in this floating garden, some things that work.
And?
Are there future plans to start propagating maybe the plants that we know that work so that we're not out looking for them in different nurseries across the state or whatever?
Our plan is to, to divide and conquer plants into these nurseries that we'll set up in the spring.
Oh, okay.
See what grows, see what, see what can sustain life.
Yeah, I think that's one of the biggest challenges that we're going to face, is identifying things that do work. And once we do that, then it's how can we multiply that, and how quickly?
Yeah, I think the discussion at our committee meeting was that, at this point, it's pretty late in the growing season to get anything done. Last year, we kind of went with the things that took place on my property, and that was, in the water plantings weren't successful. And so as we go forward next year, I think that the key is, is that as we go through the winter months and we make plans to set up some, some test, test plantings in areas, and then with whatever results we have in that, then we can use that to move forward from there. But we first need to find something that will actually grow in the water. We, I don't think that there's a problem finding things that'll grow on the water margins, and it's, it's in the water itself, and so.
And that aren't invasive. We don't want to introduce something that takes over the lake water, so.
And it seems like we should, it'd be nice if we had a list of all those right now. That would work in our, in Devil's Lake, but at this point, we just don't. And so it just takes a little time. It's gonna take a growing season, I think, next year to, to be able to come up with those.
Does, the way I understand it, just because it grows in, you know, Ten Mile Lake, down the road, the coast, doesn't necessarily mean that it's gonna grow in Devil's Lake, either.
Right.
No, because we have such a high nutrient load. That's a problem, too, in setting something.
Well, and, I mean, there's all sorts of, you know, exposures that different properties have, as well as what's out in the lake in front of each property, whether it's shale or clay, or, or rock, or gravel, or, or muck, or whatever. And so each area's gonna be a little different. And so hopefully next, by next year, I think that at the end of the growing season, we'll have a better idea of if they're, if, if things work.
Right.
It's been a learning process of finding out what likes to sit in water, and what grows in water, and what can put up with wind and waves and, you know, getting uprooted.
Yeah, going into the spring, you know, the ideal would be to get several volunteer properties along the lake with different bottoms and that, and to volunteer their property to see, help with getting many different variables in there to see what works for the season. Thank you for everything that you do. I was able to come by and see the floating garden and watch, I actually watched the launch. That was, it was fun. And it was right down to where we didn't even know if it was gonna float or not. And the excitement of the thing just floating was, oh, it was awesome. So anyways, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mary. Let's see, do we have, do we have our sewer committee chair to give a sewer committee report? Mr. Green?
Certainly do.
Good.
Thank you. Good to see you all from this side of the table, as you know. So in terms of what occurred in the past month, the big thing, of course, was our, our public workshop, big in the sense of event in our eyes. Apparently, pretty small in the, in the turnout. I think we, besides, well, you know, what, three board members and, or two board members, and sewer committee members, and a city council member, Dick Anderson, showed up and was very interested in this. We had four property owners come. But it was a good exercise, I think, for kind of honing our message and, and, you know, seeing once again that cost is the big concern. And I'm also kind of encouraged that, you know, we didn't have a, a lot of emotional opposition to it, which I think, you know, is usually the first phase in these kinds of projects I've been involved with in the past, that cost money. The first phase seems to be the adamant opposition, and it, so I'm encouraged by, by the lack of adamant opposition, both, I think, in the return of the cards, and, and the folks that showed up at the, or the lack of attendance at the meeting. So I'm looking at it slightly positively. I do think it's, it's worth it, because, you know, this meeting is televised to kind of go through very briefly the discussion points at the meeting, just because this is just an opportunity to, to once, to again educate the, the public to our problem and the solutions and related issues. So what we talked about, first of all, was in terms of the problem that we have soils around the lake that are in the worst classification as classified by the Department of Agriculture for appropriateness for septic drain fields. We went through the nitrogen phosphorus issue, that drain fields don't stop nitrogen phosphorus, and that's, that's our problem. That's, that's what we're trying to solve with sewer, that the drain fields do not stop the migration of nitrogen phosphorus to, to the lake. We went through the age of tanks and drain fields around the lake. I, I've kind of come to describe it in a shorthand way as the 40-40 problem. We have 40% of our drain fields are either 40 years old or more, or, or will be certainly by the time we're able to implement a sewer system. So we talked about the impact of poor water quality on property values around the lake, and the data that we have is, is rather striking. We show since 2014, a appreciation in property in the, within the urban growth boundary of Lincoln City at about 13%. That's over the last four years versus the decline of about 16% for lakefront. And I don't, I can't see any other variable to explain that than, than the water quality of the lake. So if you, you know, you take plus, plus 13 and minus 16, that's a difference of 29%. So, you know, you assume, even if you assume only 20% difference, that's $100,000 on a $500,000 home. We talked about solutions. We mentioned the aeration project. We have, we've got a project going forward that, you know, is obviously gonna treat nitrogen phosphorus in the lake, but we need a complementary program to stop nitrogen phosphorus from coming in, from continuing to come into the lake. Otherwise, you know, anything we can do with aeration is just gonna be overwhelmed by nitrogen phosphorus continuing to come into the lake in ever-increasing amounts. By the way, I got, I got a bit of a cold. I'm hoarse, I'm sorry, I apologize for that. Then we talked about, we compared the cost of replacing septic systems with advanced treatment systems, which are, which is what's gonna be required, which are being required going forward. They've already been required, and some folks have installed them. We compared that to the cost of replacing septic with, with low-pressure sewer. We had, actually had a graph for that, I think, that I think is pretty, pretty useful. And we talked about the project development. Folks are interested in funding. And we, you know, explained the financing possibilities available, or actually required by WOD, that we do get 20 years at low, to pay it back at low interest rates. And that, and that probably, based on projections, would be about 130 to 200 bucks a month per property. We, we made the point that searing the east side, the north and east sides of the lake, within the proposed project area, is not gonna result in substantially increased future development, both because of Lincoln City ordinance is restricting sewer and water hookups to lots that existed as of, I think it was August of 1980, and the physical limitations of, of the proposed design, so. And, and then we talked about the city of Lincoln City's role, because it is their water treatment plant that we're hooking up to, and the, how we see the, a sewer project affecting the likelihood of annexation of the, the north and east sides of the lake by the city, and.
That, that would be the unlikely, the unlikely hood of annexation, is that correct?
Well, the likelihood being very, very, being reduced by, by the, by the sewer, because, well, several reasons. It's been the primary reason brought forth in the past to do it. That reason is, is being taken away. But there never has been any enthusiasm for annexation of the north and east sides, with the exception of one city council member who really tried and failed to get interest on the part of the rest of the city council, or the past two city managers. And so I really think it's gonna help us to put a nail, and put another couple of nails in the annexation coffin versus, you know, if it doesn't happen, and, and the, the lake just continues to degrade and degrade, then, then, you know, other options eventually are gonna come onto the table. And I think one of them, because it is, it is a way to, to force sewer on the, on the east and north side of the lake, it, you know, annexation is gonna rear its ugly head once again as a possibility if we don't get this done, so. We discussed, we discussed that.
Brian, can I step in here?
Sure.
So I wanna go back to the first workshop. The amount of residents that were there were, I thought, disappointing. We had talked about what size room we needed and what the interest was gonna be. And I guess, my question first is, is how was this workshop publicized?
Well, it was, it was publicized with a letter to every, every single property owner.
Okay.
And.
It was announced two times through emails from the district as well.
Yeah, then we went through the usual public announcement process.
And this meeting?
I don't think, you know, I don't think we reached out to the newspapers or the radio.
And we do have another workshop scheduled, correct?
Have another one scheduled, and, and the only additional ways I can think to, to publicize that would be through, through the newspaper. ways I can think to publicize that would be through, through the newspaper and, and radio.
And we can definitely do that or pay, right Josh? Make sure that that happens. I guess my
You know, I think it's newsworthy, too.
Right. Well, I do agree with that, and
I think they'll publish it if we ask them.
I kind of had this feeling when I attended it, and I think the content was very valuable. I just don't want us to think, or the committee to think, that there just isn't any interest, or that, since nobody came to the meeting, they must not have an opinion one way or another, because I don't think that's the sentiment out there.
Well, and I think by the reply with the survey cards, we know that. And I think, I think we have a little over a hundred back, and then you
About thirty-ish. Do you ever take more than they've been tricked in?
So, yeah, that are not on, and I'll update that spreadsheet.
Yeah, thank you for doing that, Tina, too. That's really, really valuable.
Yeah, it's nice to see it just, you know, in black and white.
So, what Tina's doing, for those that don't know, is taking all the cards that we get and putting on a spreadsheet the responses to the two questions and the comments from the, and we got all in one place, so it's kind of easy to, to look at versus trying to look at a hundred and plus cards with more coming in. So
So my point being, to carry on a little bit more, I think we need to make sure people are there at the next one, and do whatever we can so that we truly get the feel of the residents. Because searing that side of the lake, you know, there's a lot of residents over there. And I know that some of them may be seasonal. You know, how do we know that we've reached them in order to give them the opportunity to comment?
Well, and I think, I mean, I wasn't there because I had, I mean, summertime on a Saturday is, I mean, our summer weekends
Tracked me, yes.
Are filled up by March. I mean, it's, we have every single weekend filled until the day we go back to school. And so I would presume anybody, you know, with family is, is in the same boat. But I'm glad we did hold it in the summer, because there are homeowners that are only down here in the summertime, so that gives them an opportunity to come. So, I mean, I guess what I think we need to do is maybe, you know, as we get into the rainy seasons and competition for our time on Saturdays or whenever is not as heavy, I think we'll see better attendance, honestly. You know, I would presume that our October meeting will be much better attended than a July meeting.
Right. Well
Yeah, maybe, I mean, I would think there are more people down here in the summertime, so I just expect
Yeah, but are you going to take, I mean, if you plan a family weekend to come down to the lake, are you going to take, you know, a chunk out of the day to go to a sewer committee meeting?
If I'm already here
I'm pretty sure she's not.
So, I, well
I mean, I think it's important, but I just think you have to realize what you're competing against.
I think, I think we might not get great attendance, no matter how many of those things we do.
Possibly.
But what I
But what does that give us for information?
I'm trying to think of some other ways.
That we have no information. That's
I mean, the, the survey cards, I mean, well, well, the information is brief. A, most people are giving us their email addresses and/or mailing addresses, which we already have. And they're giving us a little something. I mean, some people just answered the yes or no question and didn't leave comments, but some people left comments, and do you have that?
Yes, I do. We had to actually
So, I mean, A, we can reach out to those people because they took the time to send in the cards, if that, you know, if that's what we do, and say, you know, you obviously took the time, you were interested enough to send the card back, would you consider coming to a meeting? Because there were some really great comments in there, and some great concerns, and some great ideas. So, I think that, you know, the comments kind of covered all sides of the spectrum and, and gave us an idea of what we need to, questions we need to answer that people have. And we're early into this, you know, I, I'm disappointed that it wasn't better attended, but not surprised, I guess.
Yeah, I thought it'd be
We've seen what it takes to bring people to meetings sometimes, especially for the district. I mean, you know
Sure.
Tell them you're going to give up the water right, and
There was some big wedding or something that day on the lake, I guess, so
I just think that the importance of what would happen there and the cost and everything
Sure. No, I think that, I think when, if people really felt like there was something about to happen, they will show up.
It made me start thinking that maybe we should, we should figure out some different ways to reach people, and I thought, you know, how hard could it do, how hard could it be to do a YouTube video that just kind of laid out, laid it out from start to finish? I mean, you know, it can't be too long, but something like the presentation that we did at the meeting, maybe together with a blog, so people could have a way of giving us feedback. And then
Remember when you put the ads, or the district had put the ads in the paper every week, once a week? It was kind of a little thing in the, I thought that was very effective.
Know your lake.
Yeah. Know your lake. Yeah. I thought that was very effective, in addition to your comments, you know, YouTube and/or a blog.
Well, I mean
Well, and Cassie has been, I mean, I just talked to her, the, in fact, the night before the sewer clinic, and she was very positive and did a pretty great article, I hope everybody read it, last week.
Right.
And so I, you know, she's, seems really amicable to doing more of those and wants to know what's going on, so.
Yeah, so
Yeah.
What I like about the idea
The sewer would be a great follow-up with the water monitoring article that she did.
Yeah, that's certainly something. We can get ahold of Cassie and see if she wants to do, because like Tina said, I've been interfacing with them as much as I can here recently as we roll through these programs to keep them updated. And Jeremy, the editor there as well, has been working with me to get this information out, so they're more than happy to get it out there for us.
Yeah, I mean, the thing I like about, like a YouTube video or a blog is that people can go and look at it anytime they want to. They don't have to be in a certain place at a certain time. And, and, you know, we can even send them more correspondence, and, you know, if you want to find out something about this, why don't you go look at this? Here's a link to the, to the YouTube video. Here's the link to our website. And, you know, we're going to just have to build interest and understanding. I really do think that the better we can just educate people, just give them information in a neutral, unbiased way, I think it sells itself. And we just, we just need to get the information out there. And we have to have a way that people can, can absorb it easily and conveniently, and, you know, a way that's easy for them to do. So anyway, yeah, so, see, we're learning a lot just by having the one, the workshop already. The other thing that's important is that we're having a regular sewer committee meeting tomorrow afternoon, four thirty, at the college. And Melissa Murphy from, from Business Oregon will be there. Business Oregon is a state, it's a state agency. They have, they have money, they have a very specific program. It's called their Water, Wastewater Financing Program. And it's, I think it's primarily a loan program that funds the design and construction of a public infrastructure project. I think they have a view toward ensuring compliance with the Clean Water Act, and hopefully the Clean Lakes Act. But they also have grant funds available. And so, this could be very helpful and informative, and I'm pretty excited that she's willing to come and meet with us. So that's tomorrow, four thirty. She says she might be a few minutes late because she has to meet with the governor in Toledo. But, so hopefully, hopefully the governor will leave us some money, and we can, we'll talk to Melissa about that tomorrow. And I think we have Kathy and Mitch Moore and Miles to thank for making this contact, because that, that all came out of them attending the, the infrastructure financing workshop in Silverton on the twentieth. So, shout out to you three for doing that. And, so I think that's pretty much all I have.
Brian, when's our next workshop?
August twenty-sixth, Saturday, August twenty-sixth.
At ten thirty?
Ten thirty, yeah, same, same place. At Room One Oh Eight at Oregon Coast Community College.
Maybe this, hopefully, this workshop will be at least a different group of people. I, I know, I, I counted five people. It looked like three property owners to me, but, I mean, five, five people that I wasn't familiar with, that I'd never seen before, so that was nice to see. I'm hoping that we can get a larger turnout, because I think that, again, I think laying the groundwork for why we're, why we're interested in, the district is interested in promoting this is, is the key. We're trying to attack the nutrient problem that is, is, that gives us difficulties with the lake, is in various different ways. And one is limiting the nutrients that come from any type of septic systems, and that's a key. That's one of the keys that we think that we can do. There's a lot of things we can actively control. That's one of them, that if, if we were able to get a sewer system around the north and east side of the lake, that, that would help eliminate those nutrients that are now getting into the water system. So, great. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Brian.
Thank you.
All right. And I still don't see, do I have a representative from the Special Projects and Events Committee? Bill, do you want to give us a little?
I do, since there's nobody to represent the committee. Our Special Events Committee has put on the cleanup efforts around the lake, and we're working together with the city currently to schedule a cleanup for the west side of the lake, West Devil's Lake Road in particularly. And along with that, I don't know if our marine deputy has ever come back and filled in, or filled in on his water safety program that we'd asked for. So, we'll have to be in touch with the sheriff to get them to reiterate their briefing on the safety, the water safety issues. There's been a couple other projects that have been brought to my attention, and I think that Whitney may have some information regarding one of them in Ni'utu. So, I'm going to leave it at that right now, and just let everybody know that we're continuing to make projects, or progress on our projects that are in the works right now.
Great. Thank you, Bill. All right, let's move on. Go ahead.
A question for Josh, and it's to this, the phosphates, nutrients loading, and, is there any information that we have on levels of this problem that are, should be addressed by another agency, that we can make the public aware that this is going on? Or are these levels below an alarming rate? I want to know where we're at with this nitrogen phosphate, because I see about ninety-eight percent more organic materials coming in every year.
Yeah.
And I don't know how to measure the phosphate nitrogen, but I'd like to know how. And if our monitoring equipment will do that, I want to know what the alarming rate is here.
Yeah, that's not a problem. We can, we can handle nitrate with our probe, and I'll give you a little more elaboration once we move on to the projects. I've got to talk
So, if there's a graph that you can install on that, I'd like to see where our levels are in far as a national average?
I'll give you so much data, you won't even believe it.
Sure you can.
Yeah, not a problem, Bill. I'll be getting all that chart and graph. Matter of fact, all the parameters we've been pulling with the new gear soon. I've been getting that data together in the office, and I'll get it in a very visually pleasing format shortly.
Thanks.
Great. With that, Josh, do you want to update us on our projects?
First thing we have up to update on is our Devil's Lake Sediment Reduction Removal Project. We have moved the Airstream Pro Unit, the mobile aeration unit that we've been operating this season up to Pat Dooling's residence. It has been doing a great job up there. Bill and Kent and everybody have been by a couple times, and I've been there myself taking measurements with the equipment and gear. So far, the influences we have seen is the water has been very clear, even when we had the algae van, I directly went up there and looked at, and it seemed clearer up there. You know, that's definitely a good effect locally of having that. Bill's been up there in the water as well, and seeing a lot more fish, just like we saw to be consistent when we had it over at Blue Heron Landing. So we're seeing that increase. That could, could be a definite direct benefit of having that oxygen stream going in there, even in a local area, because those same effects happen, you know, if you have a fish tank, too. They'll congregate where that's at. We have seen a couple of inches of sediment movement down there, not, you know, not digging a trench or anything, but just a general depth profile as far as those really fluffy, muddy, mucky sediments that are essentially liquid anyway. And it's came out to around a couple of inches so far approximately, less than three. But I've taken measurements off the edge of Pat's dock and a couple of other locations right out there in Horseshoe Bay, near the unit, within three hundred feet or so, I think. So it's good to see that, that there's some type of influence, that it may actually be getting some of those really watery constituents that are stuck down there moving around where we want it to be. So we'll definitely keep an eye on that, and we'll continue monitoring that. We've also been talking about our next location and where we want that to go, so if anyone has any ideas, be thinking about that. We've got a couple of options on deck that we started to discuss, so we'll be working our way through that in the next couple of weeks to find out where our, our next landing spot is for that equipment. So, you want
I was going to ask, we've had it at the current Horseshoe Bay area for a couple weeks now, maybe a little over two weeks? I'm not sure.
Approximately.
But then, where's, how long are we going to keep it there? And then, and then are we going to, and I know there's a couple other areas that, that doesn't concern me that much about where we're going to put it, but I just wondered how long we were going to keep it there, and
I would, I would say, really, I would move a little faster towards moving it out, but since it's the, the eclipse situation is upon us, that's going to kind of throw a monkey wrench in things. But I'm looking at three weeks, as quickly as I can get it. And like I said, during this time period until when we move it, we're going to try and find that location and get our permissions and electrical access and all that we need. But that is my target, is, is three weeks, as soon as we can get it moving.
So around the first
Yeah, that'll give us a good solid, you know, thirty-plus days at Pat's house as a test as well, so.
So one food for thought, too, is what I would think, one of my views is to let that unit work there in that Horseshoe Bay area, so that it's pulling as much water as it can out of Seed Creek, and mixing it into the water column, so that we don't create a odorous situation that has been ironically there every year, every summer at this time.
Right.
So if it can rest there for another four weeks, three to four weeks, and rid that bay of that situation, I think we've accomplished our little program as far as what it can do.
Right. Yeah, I agree.
And then I do have a potential next site, which would be still on the north end, but I'm open for suggestions, because I know there's a lot of other areas that can be used.
Yeah. Great.
And that, that was a good thing. I'm glad Bill mentioned that. We recently had somebody that approached him and said that it, it smells much nicer over there than it typically does, so.
I was there four hours ago on the jet ski with my granddaughter, Marley, and it was remarkable how clean that bay was remarkable how clean that bay or that canal was compared to last couple of years. Oh, and it, it was clear even outside of it.
Yeah, I went down, just asked Mary if I could go down and stood on the dock for a while just to kind of see, it was a real still day, to see if you could see the, the current and stood there for a while and watched that. And then went last week on the jet ski and looked at it and it does, I mean, it can be really, I mean, we've gotten complaints that there's sewer spills over there, I think two years in a row because the algae goes in there and sits and rots and it's terrible.
What are you seeing for current, 300, 200?
I mean, almost out to the end of the point there, you know, I mean, you had to kind of like really stand there and look at it, but, I mean, definitely 200 feet, you can see it with the naked eye really easily, but.
Right, not just the surface water. We're not seeing what it's doing. It's probably double that underwater.
Yeah, I've been out there in the boat, like right in the stream, just to make sure we weren't getting any turbidity and dropped the meter and say she had double checked and it's, it's clear, the water that's pushing appears to be. So I don't think it's physically, you know, digging anything up.
How far are you out when you're dropping the CC disk?
I've done it in a couple of spots. I've done it kind of off the side because if you put it out in the flow, of course. So probably about 20, 30 feet away from it. And then I've also done one a little farther out, a couple hundred feet away from it. And both of those appear to be very clear, some of the little spout of, spat of algae we had this last week, but.
Yeah.
Thank you, Josh.
No problem. Our next update is going to be on our whole lake, Devils Lake Aeration Project. I've kind of mentioned here in my updates, we've been collecting a lot of additional data on our sampling runs. Definitely a lot of work on our volunteers who do our sampling with the SOS Committee and Whitney has put in a lot of time and effort and hours as well, just going out in the lake and getting that, that data and spending the time to collect it. So thankful for all of that assistance that I have in there. Very shortly, as I mentioned to Tina, I'm going to be getting all that information together and out. When it's visually pleasing, it's all raw data and numbers and things now, so it's not very exciting or translatable. So that's very exciting that we're going to start to see some payoff on that. Whitney actually noticed while we were out too, we're going to continually learn from this equipment about our lake. And she noticed that the surface waters after this algae bloom seemed to have settled down, the dust settled, seemed to be lower in dissolved oxygen, not massively, but markedly. We were reading out in the 103s, 105s percentage wise before, which is normal for surface water on, on a healthy lake. And we were down to 95s consistently in several different locations in that same portion of the water column. So we don't know exactly what that means, but it certainly could have a link to the algae that we've seen in the lake.
What's the difference from last year's reading?
You're killing me.
You don't have a graph?
Yeah, yeah, we, we will soon. We'll, we'll have a lot of comparative data. And we'll, we'll have all that to look back on. So that'll be, that'll be great for us. Looking forward to that. Also, we have had, myself and Tom have been in contact with Roy Kenyon at the Lincoln County Road Department. And he's filled us in on the potential location we've been talking about, the unapproved boat ramp, to see, you know, who owns the property, if that's legitimate for us. They're very agreeable to us placing our compressor there. They're just very concerned that, or they're concerned that neighbors may have an issue and they just want to be certain that we have their blessing before we move forward. So I know Mark and Mitch with the LNA have been heading up an effort here, being that's their neighborhood and they know the folks. They're going to get some contact with them very shortly and we're going to see their position. Hopefully no one will have an issue with it from the, the factors at play and what we know about the properties and areas. They're not even there a lot of the time and there's quite a bit of distance. Also spoke with John Tucci, who has been preparing to submit bids for us when we move ahead with this aeration project. He gave me a number of about 55 for the compressor for decibel level and about 85 if it's not, if it's not enclosed. So enclosed at 55, not soundproof enclosed at 85.
How far away was that 55?
Well, that's, that's the next thing. I'm, I'm working on trying to get some kind of humming, droning piece of equipment with my decibel meter that matches up or can kind of match up those numbers. And what I want to do is physically take it out there so we can answer that question and I can call you guys and whomever and concern property owners or anyone who wants to know. And we can kind of demo that out there and see where we are as far as the sound levels and everything. Because honestly, we should, we should know anyway going into it what we're looking at. So that is moving forward, which is very nice. So as soon as we make those contacts and figure it out, we'll be knowing where we're going from there. So, but we, we are, we are good with the county as far as ownership and placement, so.
That's positive.
Very, very positive.
Especially the fact that there are no year-round residents that live on either side of that.
Yeah, yeah. And Roy with the county has been a great job working with us and very responsive and getting back to us as far as what we need to do for permitting and all that. And it looks like it's going to be a very straightforward process once we get to that. So I don't think that, that hurdle is going to be a big issue for us as we move through.
Do you know actually how wide that strip is?
I looked at the overhead and I think it was approximately 50 wide. Yeah, we've got the dimensions from John. We talked those over with Roy at the county. I gave him copies of the specs as well on those compro, the proposed compressors that we're looking at and the size. And Roy said, "That's fine" as far as the setbacks and where it's at. We will, of course, survey and measure it out and make sure we're good on property lines. That was one of the requests of the county too, is just to make sure.
Yeah, I think there's approximately 10 to 12 feet of that property that's, that's undeveloped, so.
Yeah, and he was aware of the, the brush and everything out there as well. So he said that, you know, we want to cut it down or whatever, fine. If, if, if we want their help, we can, we can get marine. But I think some of that's probably within our ability, so.
Yeah, I think it's like within our sign area locate for the, do we have a water quality sign there at that boat ramp or is it, we have some kind of sign there?
We, we have an informational sign. We don't have a water quality sign.
But the county, just FYI, they want to keep the intended purpose as it is. And like I said, they have no problems with us putting equipment there and maintaining it as well. So, good deal.
For free?
Actually, yeah. Since we're a governmental organization, we, we don't need to pay the permit fee as well. So that's very nice.
Josh, real quick, just to give you a decibel levels. So 60 decibels, conversation in a restaurant, office, background music, air conditioning unit at 100 feet. 50 decibels is quiet suburb, conversation at home, large electrical transformers at 100 feet. That kind of gives you a range to something visual. And Tucci can insulate that differently too.
He can. 55 when it's, according to him, is when it's enclosed. And he said they can even do better and more intensive enclosure than that. I would think that wouldn't be an issue personally because we have a very cool climate here. When you start enclosing equipment like that, really, heat is one of your biggest concerns. And that's minimal for us here, even during the summer, so. Any more questions on that? All right. The next thing to get to is the website update. Once again, our numbers have been going up. Our hits and our page visits have went up. You can see on the, the report there, we're on a linear incline, I think for about the past four months, we've been seeing appreciable gain. So I am continuing to work on that as usual. I do have a committee page drafted up as well where I'm going to get a little better description to where individual committees can get their information, up meeting dates, key documents and things. So it's a little better organized. But I'll be working through that and talking to committee members here the next couple of months to get that in a fashionable format for us. So we'll continue to see more people visiting the website and using it, I think.
Great.
Good tool. Our last, my last update here was Thompson Creek, which we briefly talked about with Bill earlier. We have contacted, we called a lot of organizations. Tom put in a lot of phone time as well, getting around to different people to kind of see who, you know, who's got the ball as far as the information on Thompson. And David Waltz with DEQ was very responsive with us and has helped us. He's been working on total maximum daily loads up the watershed and the waterways for quite some time now and he was familiar with Thompson. Gives a very nice report, it was 2013, I believe, that shows the flow rates they measured versus the, the risk of what they think the sources may be coming from. It doesn't, of course, go into detail to identify point sources. That's kind of the problem at hand. It does get some good description based over things like the flow going through there and the concentrations they found when they did, based on those times. So it's really more, that specific report is geared more towards the flow of the streams, which is important, but is more important for things like fish passage and replacing culverts, which needs done as well. It's not to say there's not plenty of data in there that we can use and we can work with. And Tom and I are going to meet with David as soon as we can. He's been out in the field quite a bit on projects recently. And have a meeting with him as to our role and what we can do to continue perpetuating and getting this visible on the radar as far as the E coli issue in Thompson Creek and, and further identification of it and/or notification, what, you know, what we're doing and what is the most that we can do as an organization to keep that moving in a positive direction, so.
Josh, I had a property owner contact me regarding replacing the, the culvert and with Salmon Drift Creek Watershed Council, I think.
They have.
Whatever flux they're in.
Yeah, the last, the last time I spoke with Paul Caton and Josh Murphy, they were working on a few things, but some of their larger grants had not come in through. And I don't know if that's a timing issue and they were just waiting on some other ones to come through. But I do know, I do know specifically the larger grant they're working on with Thompson, when we made the decision to purchase the equipment instead of grant the funds, they did not get approved on that one. And I, I think that was one of their largest projects at the time. Like I said, I'm not completely.
So, and that was like nine culverts, is that right?
It was a lot. It was eight or nine culverts. Yeah, it was a very large project.
So is there, is there any way that we can work with them to get just the one done that comes into the lake?
We can, we can try and that may even be something that we talked to David Waltz with DEQ about because I believe Salmon Drift Creek was probably working with them as well, meaning as their research there was specifically geared towards that flow and those flow rates. They were most likely joint partnering with something. And, and we may too, we may see what we can do, we're definitely going to see what we can do with DEQ as far as any kind of joint partnerships. I mean, I will mention something about like that in our next meeting as well to see. Because there are grant funding out there that we would need to work with someone like DEQ to even.
Well, and that, yeah, that's what I told this individual is that, you know, that's really not our watershed.
Yeah.
When, and that's out of our realm, that, but we were supportive of the idea and so supportive that we put some funds towards it, but they were matching funds and so. But, yeah, I think that, you know, in the interest of, of the lake and that canal with that being one of our main feeders, if we can get that flow going, that, that behooves us, obviously.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it is unfortunate they did not get that approved. I know they worked really hard on that for about four years, I think. And then the second round, it just, just didn't go through, so.
So you say all the factual information is from 2013?
Yeah, I believe, yes, it was 2013 on that report.
And nothing since then?
Not from that specific organization, no. And we, we have done some as a district here and there within our boundaries as far as that bacterial sampling. Like we've kind of discussed that previously, that being dog and bird and a couple of different things when it came upon DNA or the DNA analysis that was performed. So we really, that's where we're at and why it's so difficult is, is I don't even think organizations like DEQ have been able to kind of nail down where it's coming from. It's just one of those more difficult problems, so.
So did you just answer me or is that, is that what the meeting is supposed to be about that you're waiting for?
Yeah, yeah. We're going to get together with him. Tom and I are both going over this 40, 50-page document to get a few questions together for him as far as, like I said, our role in it, you know, what can we do and, you know, what do we need to be doing for this problem? So that's.
So, and, and in other words, then dealing with the county as far as putting a nail on identifying sources, they're not, they're not prepared to be in that wide of a scope as the DEQ would be?
Well, we don't know. We don't know yet. I know, I know that you spoke with the Sanitarian as well recently and that's another meeting we're planning on, on lining up because they're going to be a stakeholder as well. So we'll, we'll start a conversation with them and see what we can do.
My goal is to get this out to the public so that we know what, at what level is, is a threat to anybody that uses the water, like.
Well, as we make these contacts and work through them, we'll, we'll be able to identify those things. This is one of those difficult problems where I think it's not going to be just DEQ and it's not just going to be the county Sanitarian or just DILWID. It's going to be DILWID and the county Sanitarian and DEQ working together and maybe even some EPA federal involvement as well, given that it's an EPA 303D listed waterway. No, I think it's, it's great. We will continue conversations with whomever we can to be interested in that and do whatever we can.
Whitney, has that, has that area hit red? Because I know when we started actually testing in the lake, those were not hitting red.
Within the lake, it's been in the safe zones all summer, but at the culvert.
Whitney, you need to use your microphone.
Once it gets to the end of the canal, it's been in the safe zone for E coli level, but right at the culvert where one of the non-report tests is taken, it's been as high as it can be for the past five weeks.
Oh, okay.
That is all that I have for Thompson Creek. Unless there's any further questions, I'll try and get the screen to work and we'll have our intern report.
Great. You can, you can go right up front. If your PowerPoint.
Is your PowerPoint on that?
Yeah, yeah, sit right up front, Whitney. There we go.
All right. So as my internship comes to a close this summer, next Tuesday is my last day, I just wanted to report a little bit on what I've been up to, the projects I've been working on and the water sampling that I've been doing. So weekly water sampling, that's my main duty and probably the most important job that I've been doing this summer. I've learned all the locations to take them, the city, county and state parks, as well as the Rock Creek and Thompson Creek watersheds. I created a new data sheet for the sampling that combines the sampling processing and reading sheets all into one, which was previously three different documents. And through the sampling each week, I've gotten to know the lake by its parks, wetland areas and homeowners and been able to watch as the lake temperature level and visibility has changed throughout the summer months. So Mondays and Tuesdays were lab mornings and I learned how to use the IDEXX call alert test system, which was mixing sample bottles, using the laminated bubble trays, as we call them, and most excitingly, I guess, was reading the samples for their E coli content. Throughout the summer, the E coli content at the 11 reported sample locations remained at safe levels. Watersheds like Thompson Creek and Rock Creek, which we've mentioned, have had high levels of E coli at the point of sampling East Devils Lake Road. But once they flow into the mixing zones and through wetlands, their levels are lowered, which is proof of the power of wetlands and with the large, the body of the lake as a whole can do for the water sampling. After the, after reading the samples and reporting the results to the master data sheet, I update the weekly report and that is then distributed to all the city, county and state parks. And Julie set up this great route, which is all right turns and no problem even during the busiest time of the day. So once she taught me that route, I was able to get all the posters out every Tuesday and, yeah, report to, get the information to the public, which is one of our most important jobs here. Oh, and we haven't needed to post for harmful algal blooms, which would be the blue spot on the water quality sign. We had an algae, an algal bloom, but we tested and. We had an algae, an algal bloom, but we tested and it wasn't harmful, so we didn't require any postings. Next, this week I've been working on inventorying the different parks, the signs that are posted, and some are from a long time ago, as you can see due to the wear on them. I'm proposing that a few of them be removed or replaced, and I've created a list of the different parks and which ones should have work done on them. To the left of the screen is a sign at Regatta Park, which used to say something, but you can't read it anymore. And the middle is at Holmes Road, which that sign is located at three or four locations around the lake, and it's an old map that is kind of out of date and is hard to read in view. So, I propose that we either remake it or take it, or we'll take it down and either replace it or not. And finally, at the far right is at the State Campground, and like many of the spots, are harmful algal blooms signs, which is the farthest one down, have become extremely faded and hard to read. There's also a few typos on them, which is not really a good thing to have. So, those are definitely on the list. Next up is, one of my first projects was to redo the 100-year history of Devil's Lake poster, which you might have seen outside of the offices, and I think there's also a link to it on the website. So, I looked through the old poster and found that it was, there was some confusing nutrient graphs and unnecessary information for the purpose in which it served. So, and it also is called a 100-year history of Devil's Lake, but it covered way more than 100 years. I changed the name on the new poster to A History of Devil's Lake, and it includes key human and natural events, lake inputs, and research projects. The new photos have been updated to show the human impact history, as well as the most recent events, which have shown themselves to be crucial years as we move forward with new monitoring and lake health technologies. So, you can view this outside the offices at the community college, and hopefully it will be up on the website soon. The latest or most recent date on it includes the new proposal for aeration and oxidation, and also our purchase of the XO2 multiparameter sond. Next up is the information board. I updated it to include what we've been up to this summer, added some more visuals, information. We've got our weekly water quality monitoring and how we do it, including the lab sheet. It also has the date and time at which we will be doing our next sample analysis and the most recent one conducted. We also have some information on lake and fish health, and a few maps and brochures that I found around the office or online with the board. One of the most exciting parts of my internship this summer was getting to learn how to use the brand-new YSI XO2 multiparameter sond. Even the name sounds fancy.
[laughing]
It has enhanced our ability to monitor the health of Devil's Lake. The sond supports seven sensors, including an anti-fouling wiper for long-term deployments. The district currently operates six sensors that measure the following, which are dissolved oxygen, depth, turbidity, total algal ficosyanin nitrates, temperature, conductivity, and pH. And our weekly e. coli tests are now accompanied by data logging at nine of the locations around the lake, which are the county, state, and city parks. Plus, we are doing three locations at the, kind of going across the lake at deeper points, getting the surface and lower levels, because there's such a change in the nutrient amount, the dissolved oxygen, and almost all the data as you go from surface to lake bottom.
Are you finding any salinity at any depths right now?
I haven't looked at the data for it, but we do have information on that. And the sond internally stores the data as the locations are logged, which it then compiles our record. And this information will be extremely beneficial as the record develops and patterns can be determined, especially those resulting in harmful algal blooms. And even what Josh mentioned about last week, we noticed that the dissolved oxygen percentage on the top of the lake had decreased post-algal bloom. And once we get those patterns together, we can start to monitor without having to use expensive kits that really are kind of after the effect. In addition to that, we found that there's zero percent dissolved oxygen at the bottom of the lake, and being able to measure this with the sond will help us when we're getting the aeration/oxidation technology. And learning how to use this equipment was probably one of the best opportunities and most amazing experiences as I move forward with my interest in natural resources management and environmental studies. And I know that from my knowledge of this equipment now will help me immensely in the future, as advanced monitoring technology is becoming a crucial part of this field and is at this point. So, thank you for that opportunity. Next up is the, I was the research and report assistant with their SOS Floating Wetland Project, because I happened to be out of town that week that it really got into the water. So, I did some research on the beneficial ways in which floating wetlands interact with the aquatic environment, after Larry and Mary returned from one of their trips and mentioned all the different floating gardens they had seen. With the, we have it in the water now, and we'll hopefully start collecting some data on what works and doesn't, and we've got a report being written up, so that will help the SOS committee moving forward with their goals. And that's the picture. I got some pictures of our first algal bloom of the summer, so if you weren't down on the south end of the lake, this is what it looked like. It gave us the opportunity to use one of the harmful algal bloom test kits, which was another opportunity for me to learn to use some equipment. And we also collected data using the sond all around that site, so that will prove helpful in the future, especially since this wasn't a harmful algal bloom.
Do you know the difference between the harmful and the non-harmful?
That's something that the test reveals afterwards. The Sludge Judge, which was a piece of equipment that Josh got, and we got to use in June around Pat DuLing's site for the aeration equipment. We kind of tested it in the area, but found that the sediment was just too dense for it to really work, but it was another opportunity to learn to use some equipment and to collect a little bit of data on just how much sediment was there. And so, hopefully that will be used again after the equipment's moved out and see what's changed from, throughout the month. The K Street in Yahtzee County Park, which has recently had some updates. I've just, as I've been doing water sampling and posting of, in the park, I've noticed that there's a lot of equipment that's out there, and it's extremely overgrown. There's some stuff in the water. There's a dock that's kind of showed up. There's three paddle boats, I don't know. People are using it, and some of it, after contacting the county about their ownership and management of the park, we came, they expressed the fact that they really are hands-off unless it is a risk for the users of the park, safety risk, or a access risk, which, when you enter the park from the road, there's a sign in one of the trees that does say, "Yahtzee Residents Association Members Only," so there's an access risk. And all the metal pipes, things in the water pose safety risks. So, in the next week, I will be contacting Roy Kenyon at the county, just to express some of our concern about it, but really, it's not our responsibility or within our reach to do more than just express to him what we've noticed. And so, that's K Street. And then with the SOS committee, I've done a lot of research on native plants and nurseries and growing habits. I also toured Kent's restoration project and really got to compile some data, which came to use when I was contacted by an interested homeowner with a proposed project. And I was able to make a site-specific planting guide for her, which I think, as a lake of varied habitats and shorelines, it's important that we have ways in which we can specialize to the different types of homes and shorelines. So, I was able to really help her with how her area was set up, and we got in some native plants, and yeah.
I don't want to order here, but what was your opinion of shoreline at K Street?
Oh.
Being in, there's no armoring there, and was there, in your opinion, adequate vegetation on the shore?
I would say it's varied because it's used as lake access, so there's, it's kind of off to the side, and I'm not sure that that's really a good shoreline. Yeah.
It's pretty shallow out in the water itself. From my, you know, past history of taking water samples last year, it's pretty shallow through there, and I don't know what it's, I haven't been there this year, except for to ride by in a boat.
Yeah. Is there erosion issues there? It doesn't really look like it.
I don't think so, but my initial interest in it was, as an SOS project, I was looking at areas where we could get some plants in the ground, do some propagation, possibly create a shoreline, and that, it appeared to be a great spot, but then upon finding out the ownership and the usage, and it was just going to be working with too many groups. So, that's when-
I think a lot of people in that neighborhood, they access the lake right there, and I know that that's, it seemed like every time I would visit there, that I would run into somebody from the neighborhood that was either coming down to use it. But, yeah, it's used pretty extensively.
Designated to be a lake access spot by the counties, but they told us.
It's not meant to be, or it is-
It's designated as lake access for the neighborhood around it, especially those that aren't with lakefront property.
Just probably needs to be cared for a lot better.
Because if the blackberries keep going as they are, there won't be any lake access.
No, no.
And so, this is the native plant garden project that I worked with Judy Weddell on. Her combined effort of going to a few nurseries and getting plans, and having a landscaping group come and get the area prepped for planting, as well as, I got plants from the Sexton property for her, and researched which ones would work well for the area that she had. And she does have a barrier along her shoreline and wasn't really interested in creating, in taking it out or creating a buffer zone with anything else. So, we worked with what we could on the shoreline, and it ended up coming together pretty well. And she was happy with what the district could provide with, for information and everything.
Yeah, I think Judy's put a lot of effort into her property this summer, her home, and the landscaping and stuff that they've done is pretty commendable.
What, is that west side or east side?
West side.
Oh, okay.
Right near Regatta Park.
Yeah, it's like the last, the last home south on Lake Drive? Is it Lake Drive?
I believe so.
Yeah. She's right at the end of the road.
And that's all I have.
Great. Great information.
Very good job. Very good job, Whitney.
Thank you very much.
I guess the big question is, are you going to apply for the job next year? Experienced.
Whitney, I'd like to say thanks for the summer. It's been nice having you here, and I think just your presentation shows, at least it demonstrates to me that it's nice to have somebody young and fresh and talented come work for the district in the summertime. So, thank you.
Thanks, Whitney.
Moving on to new business, I know that I talked to Josh about this, at least to have him bring this up, that we need to discuss whether we purchase or return our Airstream Pro that we've been using this summer. And so, Josh, can you, first of all, I guess what I need from you is, what's your, what's your take on how we've used it this summer? In your opinion, has it been valuable? Is it something we should hold on to? And then, how much is it going, if we were to choose to purchase it, how much is that purchase price for us?
From what I've seen so far, and granted, it's been a semi-short time that we've been operating the equipment, I'm happy to see any kind of positive change in what we're looking for, as far as the oxygen numbers, as far as the sediments on the bottom, and just the general flow of water in some of these stagnant areas like Horseshoe Bay. I think for the marginal cost that we've put into that, and what we would need to purchase the rest of it, which is approximately $5,000, and I can get an exact on that from our earlier invoice, to pay it off, and then it's ours. Like I said, I think it's a value, and I think it can be a value coming up. There are still several areas around the lake that we've kind of spitwalled together, community members and committee members and board members, as far as what they'd like to see out of it, and maybe see it operate in those areas too. In order to do that, of course, we'll have to have some more time with it. I think we're due approximately about the end of September to get that thing back on its way, if we're not going to keep it. So, not a whole lot of time left. My opinion is, is that for the cost, the bang for the buck is great. Just the amount of water it moves and the oxygen that it puts in versus what it costs to operate and what it costs initially is a plus, because right now it is the only thing we have that we're actively doing, is actively putting oxygen in and moving water, which are two very major components of the aeration system to combat a lot of these ill effects that we're trying to in the lake. So, it is doing two of those things right now.
Comments from the board?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we purchased the Airstream Pro.
I just had a question here. So, how much would it cost to ship it back?
It's about $450, $500 freight, give or take, yeah. And then, of course, we're not, you know, if we ship it back, we'll pay shipping, but if we keep it, we don't get to, so that's factored in the cost.
Actually, that purchase price was discounted for us originally.
Yeah, it was.
Well, I'm all for it. I think it's the first line of defense in the small waterways. You know, we know in our research with the airs, or the aeration, it's not going to hit everything. We know that, and canals have been an issue. And I'd like to second Bill's motion that we should purchase it.
Do we have further discussion?
My only addition to the comments is that if we don't start doing something that we can do right now, then it's not going to be a benefit if we continue to let the water quality degrade when we have an opportunity to help it. So, it's a no-brainer for me, and the proof is in the books already to what it can do, benefit, and I think it's just good all around that we have that tool to move the water as much as possible, because dilution's the solution. Thank you.
Do you have any comments, Dana?
Nothing more than what we've already talked about.
You know, my feeling is that we just began to scratch the surface, and it's no different than the things that we're trying to do with planting. We've tried a little bit here, and we need to do more. And so, you know, I think $5,000 purchase, and then approximately a purchase of the Airstream Pro, and then the cost that it takes to hook up for electrical, and then the monthly fee on top of that is small compared to what, if we were to operate it and continue to use it and see how it supplements our overall plan to do aeration for the lake, I think it's money well spent. And so, you know, my feeling is that, hey, it's no different than planting a plant. We have to try it and see, and the more we do it, the more information we're going to get, and the, I think it is an active thing that we can do. It's one of the few active things we can do to help the lake.
Right now.
Right now. So- So.
Just one question, do we run it during the winter also? I mean, how do the storms affect it?
We can run it whenever we want. Typically, it's ran more in the summer because that's when our water temperatures are higher and that's when our problems come to bear for us. So, usually, in the same way with the full-ice aeration system, that most of the proposals are relating to just running it during those summer peak months, just as a cost versus benefit situation.
So, could I hear a motion again from you, Bill?
I'd like to make a motion that we purchase the Airstream Pro to continue our progress forward in establishing a plan that will help the lake in the long run.
I second it.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Josh, go ahead and let John Tucci know that, figure out what that price, actual price is and then we'll move forward with that. Good.
Sounds great.
Although it's not listed under new business, we, I know that Josh is, will be with us nine months at the end of this month. And so sometime between now and our next board meeting, we need to have an executive session to do a evaluation of Josh. We've been, in his contract, when we hired him, we, we put a stipulation that the first year we'd do a, an evaluation of him every three months. And we, as a board, have found that valuable. And so if we could establish a date, that would be great.
How about September 7th, the week before the board meeting?
That's a Thursday. Whitney?
September 7th. Labor Day is the 4th.
I would be available for that.
I'm good. I'm good for that.
Does that work for you, Josh?
Oh, yeah, I'm great. Time of day preference?
Middle of the day or?
Eleven o'clock?
I have a meeting from 10 to 12, so I can be available at 12 on.
I'm, I'm all day, so.
Yeah, afternoon, good. One o'clock's great.
1:00 p.m.? Okay, 1:00 p.m., September 7th, I'll get the announcements made.
Okay. Next, under new business or non-agenda items, I know that Miles brought up, has brought up a couple of times, our city council meeting attendance to try to put our, our face in front of city council. I've always thought that that's a good idea. I'm just not sure who to do it, so to speak. And, but I, I, Miles, I think that's a great idea. I think that we should establish some kind of a regular time where we just come up and do the test, testifying in front of city council, just at what's taking place here, the positive things that are happening with the board and what's taking, and what's happening. And I think that can do nothing but keep them informed and put the lake back in the forefront of where it should be as an important part of this community. And I think that it's, a lot of people will come to town and, oh, there's a lake there? Or not as many people recognize that there, that we do have a unique feature to this community and it is Devil's Lake and it's a very important feature, both for tax purposes as well as just a recreational, beautiful place to, to enjoy. And so I, I think that we need to make an effort to do that. I'm just not sure how.
Don't leave out the wildlife habitat.
Any ideas from the board?
Well, I think, I honestly think, I think it's a terrific idea, but I think monthly is too frequent. I think quarterly updates, as somebody who testifies in front of city council, their agendas are very full.
Right.
And, you know, I, I think about us meeting monthly and how frequently we hear information and sometimes we don't even have, you know, update information because it's been a short period since the last meeting. So, and, so I think quarterly updates, you know, Memorial Day, Labor Day, you know, spring and winter would probably be plenty. And as much as Josh is probably going to hate to hear me say, I really think it should be Josh. You know, and a quick, you know, maybe a two-slide PowerPoint with, with what's happened since the last time you saw him. And especially with the aeration project and the sewer, which are two things that, that kind of, we need their buy-in on, the sewer for sure. And if you're on the agenda, you can be in and out. You don't have to, you know, if it's something that is a regular thing.
I agree. And I think the visual aspect of it, it's, those meetings can get quite long. And I think anything that, anytime you can break up one of those meetings with a visual, it really refreshes things there and you can be in and out. And if you're on vacation or whatever, Josh, I'll step in for you. I'd be happy to.
Yeah, I would be happy to.
But I think it should be prepared out of your office with a visual.
So, we should talk about that in your evaluation?
Yeah, yeah, well, I truly don't mind. I, I definitely just, you know, I don't know how, if it carries as much weight for me, because I'm, I'm essentially the only employee of the district and as an employee, I'm biased towards my organization. So, as.
We hired you.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, that's what I mean, but, but from the city's perspective.
Sure.
I may be more biased.
And I'm happy to accompany you, you know, as well, if you, if you would prefer to have a board. I just think it should be prepared and presented by you because, A, you're the new guy in town and getting your face out there and getting, you know, comfortable with people contacting you, you know, it's always great to say, and here's my phone number and my email. You're our leader.
Well, I think, I think it's a great idea and I, I do believe, I think you're right, Tina. Monthly is too much, quarterly's probably plenty, as well as, you know, it doesn't take, it won't take up as much time as, as what we think at this time. So, well.
We can talk about the logistics.
We can talk, talk about that and how that might work. Okay. Any non-agenda items from the board?
I have two. And one of them was a question I had for Whitney that I didn't ask. You, the signs that you took pictures of, do you have recommendations for what you would like to see up there or what you think would be beneficial to see up there if we did replace those?
For the, the two, the yellow and the blue water quality signs, I say should stay. I discussed with Tom today, possibly not replacing the harmful algal bloom signs because we have a good track record for the past year or so. And it's more of like, it kind of just is a scare thing with what we have right now. It includes like all the symptoms. It like even mentions something about death, so I really don't think it's a necessary thing to have at all the parks. But I was talking with Josh about possibly making one that we could then post if we have a harmful algal bloom, but not something that we're constantly announcing that, yes, this lake has harmful algal bloom.
Yeah.
Because it's not really something we want to.
One of the, um, the, the sign, the history of Devil's Lake, I think you called it, instead of the 100 years, Devil's Lake, what, what about putting that, getting that made into a medium that could be posted?
Yeah, that's a possibility.
Because, you know, it's kind of a quick down and dirty of, you know, a little history of the lake, because I was just out of state and somebody was like, wait a second, that's like a full-blown lake? And I was like, yeah, it's a lake. And they're like, oh, we thought it was just like a wash-in from the ocean. And I was like, no, it's a lake.
There is a spot in Regatta Park where it's got, what's the structure like? The round one that we looked at today?
Oh, like a gazebo.
Yeah, and it's got a history with all these different panels and it's really well-done. I think it's from about 20 or 30 years ago. It's still got the old logo on it. I think the date was, is the 80s. It had the board members and everything listed. So, that's out of date but could stay as a historical reference, but like you mentioned with the poster, that could be added to one of those panels if we are interested in doing them.
Well, and the, the map one that you said was outdated, you know, either redoing that or?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think a commitment to redoing our signs is needed. It's expensive to do that.
I know it is, but it also looks really terrible.
But I agree.
At least for the first step, taking down the ones that are really bad. And we, our weekly water quality signs are still in very good condition, so that's really what matters to us right now.
Sure.
So, when's your last day?
Tuesday.
If you could get that on your schedule.
Yeah.
At least in a refreshed update.
I just need a sledgehammer.
Yeah. She can take care of that. And the last one is, I am out of state for our September meeting.
Okay.
Sorry.
Any other non-agenda items?
Oh, I've got one. I just wanted to send a congratulation to Rick and Patty Sorensen for being the first that I know of, sewer connection on Lake Drive, a couple doors down from Regatta Grounds. And everybody's site will be different cost-wise, but this, this particular connection was in the range of $5,800. That is excavation plus the cost of the unit. So, in relativity, most people can expect somewhere that range of connection fees within 100 feet of the sewer line. Some people may be farther than that, so it would be increased, but as far as I know, this is the first one.
Contractor? Who is contractor? Do you know?
A Lincoln City contractor.
Yes, Lincoln City.
Okay. Great. Good for them. Now we're starting to get.
Here we go.
People moved up.
There's one.
Number one.
Yes.
Thank you.
Other from the board? Any additional comments from citizens present? Sorry, Miles can't come on up. You've waited all this time, you have to have some.
Miles Schlesinger, I think Tina's idea quarterly is real good, but I do think for the first couple of meetings, that one of the board members should be there. You all are in business here or have been. Kent, isn't, you've worked at the hospital? And you add a certain amount of stability that the, the city, I think, respects. And I think it's real important to put Josh in a good light and just introduce yourself as a board member and say the technical stuff. You've brought Josh Brainard, who is, is capable and more capable of yourselves to, to explain that.
Thanks, Miles.
Thanks, Miles. Well, you know, I, I agree with you, Miles. I think that's, that really is, if a board member could, could make it, I think that a commitment would, it would be worth it, because we all have, we all are here to better this community and both, we're all elected officials, officials, and we, we want to work with the city council and make this the best community possible. So, thank you for your suggestions. Any other comments from the, the audience? Board announcements, comments? We have a, our next sewer workshop on August 26th at 10:30 at Oregon Coast Community College. If you weren't able to make it to the last one, please try to attend this one. It's really an informational sharing meeting and, and so come and find out about the reasons why we're looking at searing, promoting searing the north and the east side of the lake and what's involved in that. So, with that, thank you all for coming tonight.